All right, well, we're starting the Scottsville Town Council meeting Zoom recording here. I'm going to post this agenda on the screen share and mute it while we have everything together. It's assuming in the future. Thank you very much for having us reporting up on the town website for your accessibility. There is chat box on screen and a public forum on the agenda. So if you're interested in participating in our meeting, please feel free. Thank you very much for joining Scottsville Town Council and we'll launch the public portion of the meeting about fifteen minutes.
Hello.
Now, it's fun to do this.
Can you hear me okay?
I'm just going to take the outlines that I highlighted.
Did I miss any notes from you on minutes?
Thank you.
Uh, there's a typo on Alex's name that I found. My apologies, Alex. I get that straightened out. Um, uh, I sent that out this morning though, Matt. I'm not sure if you saw the...
Oh. There you go. Excellent.
Uh, Matt, don't print those. Yeah, they have the full attachments with, uh, like the full, uh, Excel spreadsheet. I think they're each about three pages, but three pages of actual minutes and then all the attachments. So you'll want to do a select print.
Which we print out as table three one. Half of CDC coronavirus test kits are inaccurate study files. The test is wrong half the time. Ouch. Good problem. Does it say inaccurate which way? Accurate both ways. Well, Ray knows somebody that had five tests on five consecutive days that gave alternating results every day. So something go either way. Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm good. How are you still?
Where they? Uh, did you? I don't think, I don't, I don't remember to be honest with you whether it was, or they actually had something. Uh, I'm assuming they must have had some kind of symptoms. Glad it is. That isn't, uh, like, uh, well, it was a friend of a coworker or something like that. It wasn't anything.
I have a great uncle who was one of these folks. I mean, he's pushing ninety years old and, uh, came down with it. Didn't have a bad case, but continued to test positive for over a month.
Ah.
Uh, and they just weren't quite sure what to do with that.
Yeah. Not dying, but, huh, it's dying. I wonder if my cell phone.
Yeah.
I had a couple of nice chats with Mr. Bowling this afternoon, and I think you did too.
Isn't he, uh?
He is fun to talk to.
Oh, Matt, that reminds me. Uh, when I spoke with Jim briefly this morning, he mentioned that conversation about, uh, street names and asked me to take a look at whatever it was he had sent to you that morning. I guess that was this morning. Um, could you send that along?
Send you the thing that he sent me?
Yeah, he said he'd just be interested to get my take on it at some point.
If he sent that to you this morning, it's changed two or three times since.
Oh, okay. Well, then I don't know how useful my take would be.
It ended up with, uh, our attorney and the county attorney and friends and everybody.
Yeah.
A says it's B's responsibility, B says it's A's responsibility. Can't do anything unless, uh, somebody initiates some sort of petition drive and public outcry, I think, so. What is that? Renaming streets. We have conflicting, we have an ordinance in the town code that says town can do it, but B dot has a, uh, ordinance that says they do it if they maintain street. So the county attorney says it's our responsibility if we want to rename something. And our attorney says it's the county's responsibility. So we don't get any funding for our streets from B dot, so.
If you wanted to have an empty.
Hey. Last minute, man. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I actually read those.
Hello, Harry.
Hey, Matt, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, um, though faintly not as well as up, folks up on the dais, but that's probably just fine. Uh, I was just going to ask if you wouldn't mind calling roll, uh, when we get going here this morning. I think it just might be a little easier for you.
Let me ask you a question before we get started. Oh, yeah, law. And I know, you're free. Like, I have your dictionary, but it's right there. Uh, lady contact field weekend acts under that policy, Mark, about this. Her, uh, she was, was a scout leader for a number of years, and one of her scouts actually did picnic typical wars that were reduced down there. Then while those open springs started, and she calls me, well, picnic that was pretty lazy. Which is not proud of her, so she won't make sure her scouts picnic.
Back at twenty or three.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out who cannot call when they tell me.
We should talk to Matt and the Dan.
Even though it's not a, in Scottsville, it's sure.
We should talk to Matt and just get the parts off.
Yeah, she just wants to make sure that her scout's paving is put back there when the proper time will rush. I'll say, well, I'll try to get you to answer the mic on who we need to talk to.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I think it was his eagle project, so. You know how that goes.
I might sit over there to give us more space.
Oh, Zach's going to be at home, so.
Oh, Zach's not here?
Yeah.
Well, that last word I got, didn't you say he'd kill?
I see you there, Zach.
Thank you, Thomas. It means a lot.
No problem. Oh, hey, I actually did want to mention to you, uh, since we can sidebar here. Um, my folks are following through with the, uh, what is it? VHDA Historic Renovation Credit?
Oh.
Um, they went through the initial, like, uh, eligibility phase, just sent in all the ARB ordinance about the historic district and stuff. And now they're, you know, submitting plans and pictures and things that have to get approved.
Um, cool.
But I think they might, I think they're planning on coming back in August with some more COA stuff. Um, and they might have an update by then a little bit on how that, that's been working.
Well, that's great. And that's through the state of Virginia?
That's right. Yeah, that was one of the things Matt went down to Richmond and, uh, talked with some folks about as an option for people, you know, that had kind of typically been thought of, I guess, as, you know, kind of only accessible to big projects. And he had a very encouraging conversation that actually, like, less substantial home renovations can qualify for this. Uh, again, if they, you know, qualify through that eligibility of being in the historic district and being old enough and all of that.
Yeah, no, that, that's actually really good to know because that, that has definitely been a sticking point. So it has to be in the HOD and of a certain age.
I think that's right. They, their regular accountant actually knew something about this and so has been helping them, helping them through it. Um, but yeah, I think that's right. Uh, I'm sure there's a little bit more to the eligibility than just that, but I think those are the biggest pieces of it.
Well, that'd be good for us to know because as I, as I understood it, at one point, there was like a $10,000. I feel like there were like limits to money, like up to 10 grand, but it had to be on the historic registry or on the historic register?
Well, I think our whole HOD is on the register, and I think that's part of what helped them out, being in the HOD that's on the register. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that, that is very good to know. I'll be, I'll be keen to learn more from them about that.
Absolutely.
Sure. Did you pretend saying he was gone to be absent?
Said he was going to be absent, so. No. The United Nations came up with that nineteen forty-eight and had a forty-eight countryside. We are one of us. And it's really good. It's really hard to do. And, uh, I will catch up with, uh, with Ray even and answer the question.
Okay.
She was, for the day, I'm both interested. Haven't gotten with Graham Page yet, but I'm working on this. I'm trying to get the question to this guy.
Standing. That'd be great.
We'll get you a group pool. All right, is it time to do this thing? Do we have ice cream? Well, that's, I said, we don't have ice cream in the freezer. What time are we getting over there? I only have dessert and salad, so. I was just in invitation to everybody. Well, I guess the, uh, I guess the gavel's in the other room, so I will call. And I would ask us all to stand and.
United States.
Republics for which stands one nation. Inuseable with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we have, uh, Ron's worth called a roll.
Um, I asked Matt actually if he wouldn't mind. Might be a little easier to do in person.
Mr. Boeing pretending lovely officer, is I here?
I'm here.
Mr. Rizzo?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Musson?
Here.
Mr. Payne? Uh, Mr. Tucci, is that your name? We will update that agenda.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Payne had indicated last week that he had to go to, uh, out of town today, and it was a long trip. And he didn't know if he'd be back in time, so he hopefully safely returning from his journey out of town. Next on item number two, consent counter approval of the agenda for tonight, the financial report for June twenty twenty. And the past meeting minutes, May eighteen rigor session, June eight work session. Um, are they both in this document that you handed us, Alex, or?
Yes.
Okay. I just say June eight.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so, uh, I read them this morning. Anybody have any questions about the minutes? If not, can we have a motion to approve this consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent challenge.
There a second?
I got it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is the point in our meeting where we have our public forum, and I would like to, uh, continue the practice that I think our last two mayors are pretty much done. If you have something that's not on the agenda and you wish to speak, uh, please feel free. If it's something that's going to be addressed on down the line, it's one of the topics that we cover. You're certainly welcome to wait until that topic is, uh, on the table and then, uh, come forward and, uh, speak your mind on whatever we happen to be working on at that time. That's okay with anybody. So at this point, is there anybody that wishes to speak from the public? At home or in the, in the room?
Yep.
Yes.
If you're at home, I believe you can unmute yourselves. I've looked at this part.
Okay.
No, I never did this.
All right. What's going on?
Okay, I'm Barbara Tate, um, Terry Tate's wife, East needs the garage. And I just had a few questions. Um, our town's looking really ratty. And there's weeds growing sidewalks, coming in weeds going out of the storm sewers. Everything's unkempt, and it used to always be kept up. And that didn't always have, everything didn't have to be on the business owner, or I don't know about the business. At least I'm talking to the business owners, I guess. We just spent a week and a half digging up rock and trying to clean up our stuff, you know, in front of our shop. I don't know. I have a bad back, and I was out there anyway. But they used to take care of all that. And, well, that was one of the issues. And I guess the other issue probably doesn't affect the council, it's probably the chamber. But we all, all the business people had to purchase boxes with their nameplates on them and everything. They were always supposed to be kept up with flowers, and then that kind of died out this year. I replaced.
Several years ago, the chamber did buy plants around town. And then we had a girl who was pretty diligent and paying those flowers, and then they sort of took them over to their home. And decided to lay on the ground and move the plant somewhere out of sight.
Yeah, ours never moved, but I mean, you know, and something, and a girl was coming. And, uh, it was my understanding that she didn't have funding, uh, while this COVID stuff was going on. And she was just putting in stuff that she got from her job. Excuse me. And, uh, it looked kind of ratty, so I ended up paying money and doing ours, our stuff. So I didn't know if anything like that was going to be taken care of. Okay. Okay.
Can I also say something related to the weeds and things?
Yes, sir.
I worked with the parks committee and things in the town in terms of it used to be, uh, what you call communications.
Mm-hmm.
And that committee functions a couple of ways. One is you just volunteer work, and the other one is we work with the town maintenance. And I will say with COVID-19, for several months, I was a little unclear how I wanted to proceed. You'll be happy to know that I just recently was in touch with people in like a video, we want to get back out. And so I could say two things. You could feel free to be communicating with the name of the parks.
Okay.
And I would also say, Matt or Thomas from the office, anytime you see anything, bring it to our attention because it comes two ways. One is, you have eyes that we might miss something. And second of all, it's also, we've gone through the last year and a half, so a little bit of bouncing time in terms of the payments of the towns. Been a little bit of a tricky issue, but we're getting, uh, I guess I would say better understanding of where we are. Move, oh, in fact, you see in front of you here, some of the guys that actually come from some work, sitting right there.
Oh, sorry.
So that said, please let us know because we want the town to be beautiful. I do apologize that it's been a long time recently.
Yeah, because someone was weeding like in front of Lucky's, and they just left all the stuff on the sidewalk, and it just looks bad.
So first of all, feel free to have a communication with us.
Okay.
Second of all, realize, um, that's, that's the first thing to, you know, to be communicating with.
Okay.
As we get back, one of the things we did with the volunteers in the parks committee is we would have typically, you know, one night a week where we could volunteer. And to be honest with you, it literally was bringing me into the nervous level. I wasn't quite sure what to do.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Didn't do it, but that said, I got to a point where I was able to.
Okay.
Feel free. I really appreciate your concern.
I would be more than happy to help, but I have back troubles. I can't really do too much.
Third also, as like finding people and building and working out and getting, not just the business community, but as we're a good council here, all of our committees use people who have served in different ways to know whether that's in the area that you got adjusted for. I'll lose out there. Yeah, you know a lot of needs in all of our committees from that. You know, anytime we can get volunteers, I was at a meeting one thousand years ago, and people were driving. You know, you guys, this country, you know, you were volunteers. We've never had anybody volunteer.
Hmm. I would, honest to God, if my back wasn't so bad, I would.
It's okay. We will, let's say, uh, contact me, contact me, you know, let's, you know, and just get your comments. We'll be the one who writes.
Okay.
Clear this channel again. Any, anytime any citizen out there has any issue, whether it's payments or whatever, is through the town office. That's where you want to communicate them. But, but now the same thing, I would say some of the buck stops here, we're trying to oversee the overall. And there's others, people like Jim and obviously Ted, at different times. So thank you for.
Yeah, because I figured we, I mean, the bee poll tax we pay and our landlord pays taxes, and we try to keep, you know, the business up and in front of our, best we can. But, uh, my husband asked me to ask because how much, who, whose taxes go toward the nature, so?
Toward the, toward the nature area?
Yeah. Is it the town's people, the residents? Who pays taxes on the?
When you say that, what do you mean by the, the?
The, bank claim.
The Scottsville Toronto Park Committee or?
No, bank claim, the na, bank claim.
Well, when we do that, we actually go and we buy something or we, it would be through town maintenance. Or we've gotten grants before, in fact, we've tried to get other grants. But most of the stuff like we've got with the bank, nature area, like the things that we've got through grants or through volunteer. I heard a lot of the Boy Scout, uh, last year put in a really nice new area that was all funded up and raised.
Mm-hmm.
So there's.
Because I thought that Charlottesville had wanted to annex that.
Had wanted, sorry?
Had wanted to annex that.
No.
Does it make it part of Almarin where they would take taxes from Almarin County or something?
Well, it's not any.
That's what I heard. That's, I know.
But that's something. It is Scottsville, it's always Dan's free, they come out and they'll.
I got you.
There is a call to access to bank proof that is, um, kind of the one of the gridways with the water utility line.
Mm-hmm.
That allows those that live in Collant Town.
Right.
To walk to bank proof, and I'm one of those residents that walks over and cuts through on that town.
I got you.
And so part of that is privately owned.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay.
It's actually.
But it's all within town limits.
Right.
Um, and in terms of the, you have to be all paid tax for this time.
Right. Okay, well, that's all I have.
Well, we had a clock out in front of the shop the other day.
Right. Yes, I did.
One of the things that I mentioned in the rest of this is that the town, um, needs to use, uh, organic. So that's creating additional challenges with the amount of application, kind of right timing for the application. Uh, definitely makes it quick. Unless you don't want to show off your natural.
Right.
You know, whether it's fudge bees or other flowers, things like that. So, um, I think what Dan's talking about with volunteers is really, I think mobilizing volunteers is really probably the most effective way to do that.
Okay. Right. Oh, sorry. I was just going to ask if I could join in on this topic from home. I don't know what the protocol is. That's fine. Yeah, I'm done. I'm just, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
All right.
State your name, please.
Oh, can you guys hear me? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Okay, could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name's Ray Juhan.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um, it was just kind of piggybacking off on that. I had a couple of questions and, um, sorry if you guys already kind of covered this. I can't hear, make out everything through the mess, but, um, would it, has it always been volunteer based? Or has that, has like the weeding and upkeep of maintenance of the town, is that part of the budget or the, um, of the maintenance department?
Uh, just, so this is Dan speaking. I'm going to ask him that question. Okay, so yes, we have had staff, that's got a staff thing, the volunteer effort is secondary. I, I may have, may have sounded incorrect, but, uh, so we had some issues in terms of how we transitioned from, like, through the staff. Maybe Matt, you could, like, just, where have we been over the last eighteen months on that, just like a really quick overview?
Sure. We had a full-time position with that job description. It has some vacancy and is currently a part-time position. I'm still working a little bit on the best scope of work for that and certainly understand the maintenance, um, concerns, uh, on that scope of work. That is primarily a staff responsibility, um, and I'm happy to help, uh, rearrange those priorities and put more time into it myself. Uh, we appreciate the volunteer commitment very much, but, uh, Ms. Pate's right. Uh, the tax dollars fund the staff, and the staff need to do that work to maintain town property.
And just, just to also say that the problem with not taking that, it was, it's also an effort on the, on the, see, I was nine million. And I've been a little bit on for a few months, I'm a little bit, a little uncertainty both on the issue of how to move forward with COVID-19 and then also the issue with, as we've thought through some budgetary things. But the point of it needing to be done is correct, and the, the fact that we want to get it done, it'd be a welcome people's opinion. One of the things I have appreciated is you'll find that the members of the committee who actually get out and do the weeding are some of the people who are most concerned about it, so they have really good eyes to see and often they direct what we do. I'm usually the person that would say, hey, where's the biggest need at the moment? Have we got to meet that meeting? The, the bigger issue, though, is long-term to care not only of what you see along the street, but also the parks and then the bigger parks.
Right.
I just, I just want to tag you because I, I need to make it sound like volunteer. I just, I just want to tag you because I need to make it sound like volunteers, it's a responsibility of the volunteer. However, um, because of some of the shipping that happened in the maintenance role, um, and the fact that at one point we had actual landscapers handling a certain portion of this, there's been a lot of changes. And so with COVID happening and everything else, um, it's definitely been a challenge to adjust everything at the same time and keep it developing with the roles changing. So at some point, hopefully, we have, um, kind of a system figured out where the maintenance person is applying, it's heavily involved tiers. However, I think the volunteer piece of that is important, there's a lot to maintain. If we want to keep the town, um, bee friendly and native plant friendly, I think volunteers are important, weeding is important. You can't trick the maintenance person to weed the entire town to do the duty, so there has to be a balance, may have to find that, whether that's figuring out a way to make the maintenance person more efficient at his, at his role, improving his, his schedule or whatever it is, it's something that's definitely, I, we all been talking about this. I mean, I was in a certification committee starting over about a year and some change ago, and we've been talking about this for a while and it seems to be getting progressively worse and a lot of that is due to COVID, um, but it's definitely something we want to off our plates, we want to figure better things, so.
Well, I guess that's why I was asking, I was just curious because I'm, I mean, I would love to get out there and I have, I know that Liz and I have done some weeding and, and other people have volunteered, um, it just seems daunting as a community member and as a volunteer to do everything, and I know that it's daunting for Cody, poor thing, like has so many responsibilities that he's stepping into, and I think that everybody that knows him and knows his role in the town is understanding of that. And I don't know what the budget is, um, and probably like everybody's this hard up right now, but I just was kind of asking because I think that I would certainly be more apt to, and I know a lot of other people that have spoken strongly about it, would be more apt to volunteer on a regular basis and keep it maintained because it isn't so daunting and, and poor Cody has everything to do, um, from my understanding, you know, a lot of things to kind of catch up on, and I just didn't know if it was in the budget or worth it to look into maybe hiring a landscaping company or, you know, putting a little bit of money and effort towards that to kind of get it moving initially and then just keep up with the maintenance.
The one thing I would say, this is Dan again, just, I think it was yesterday, so I, just yesterday, I think it was, I sent out my email, first time I sent out in a long time, so feel free to email me, anybody out there, we will be happy to have you join us for our work sessions coming up in the next few weeks when it's not, not even seven degrees at night, but we'll, on a Wednesday night, that's one of the plan sometime, and then the other issue of us being in communication with Matt to see what we can do to deal with things that are more long, this is, this is kind of a big issue, there's a lot of things. Laura came up with a list too about a year and a half ago. We just have taken some steps backward in it because of what's happened. I will also say to you too, going into last fall and even last winter, the practice of our committee, we were doing volunteer work once, usually two nights a week going into early, I mean, early winter, which was the intention to redo that again in the spring, but like I said, with COVID-19, it was not, I wasn't sure what to do. But that said, my goal was to come to this council to restart that, and so you're on a good timing of where we are. And Rae, I would say to you and others out there, feel free to be in contact and we will update you on when we will do our volunteer efforts and then at the same time, we can be in communication with Matt and Thomas on the efforts we're going to do with staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we had, had a couple of folks arrive after we started this part of the meeting and I see Mr. Heisem's joined us. Uh, either of you three have anything you wish to speak to at this moment? Then we'll move on to item number four, which is the mayor's report. And the mayor has been busy. Really, he actually has. Uh, first item I'll, I'll mention is that I met with Nancy and Matt, Nancy Gill and Matt, regarding item number seven, six D on your agenda, and we'll, so we'll get to that later. It's a very simple matter and it's nothing to get excited about. I spent a good hour plus with the chief, uh, the other morning, uh, talking about different things in, uh, in town, happening in town, and, uh, Mr. Pachi wandered by and joined our, in our conversation, got some of his questions answered about auxiliary officers and, uh, some other aspects of our law enforcement department here. Um, I had met with the, Mr. Peter Rapp and again Nancy regarding, uh, here's, um, they, they have had a thought on how could the town or here, and all three of us worked with Chamber of Commerce in, um, having businesses be a little more proactive in the wearing of, uh, ma, face mask and promoting, uh, a safe Scottsville. Um, and we know that it's, it's a personal issue and we're not, you know, saying everybody must do this, but, uh, when you have, uh, signs posted and, and people go into the supermarket and ignore the signs, you're not gonna have some minimum wage shelf stocker tell them they have to leave, so. We're working on a plan where we could put it out in a positive manner, uh, to, uh, to encourage people to be safe and therefore promote thought around the area that Scottsville is a safe place to, uh, do your, your shopping and, you know, your outdoor dining. I had a complaint about the parking lot at the Dollar General store, which, surprise, it was, looked like a storm had blown through and left all the trash there, which was its usual, uh, usual way to describe it. So I contacted corporate office in Tennessee for Dollar General and I got an email from a local, uh, I don't know whether he's a local supervisor or a regional supervisor, his name's Mr. Christopher Ashley, and within about forty-eight hours, parking lot had been cleaned. Um, I spoke to the chief also, there've been some reports to me of, let's just say, some undesirable characters hanging out in that parking lot during the course of the day and chief is aware of that, and so he is, uh, he's on top of that. I met today with Karen Firehawk. She, uh, operates Green Infrastructure, the business went into, uh, where the gallery five-two-seven used to be, really nice lady, she teaches architecture at UVA and, uh, welcomed her to town, something I hadn't had a chance to do up until today, and, uh, she wants to join our Chamber of Commerce and as soon as things settle down a little bit, uh, we'll get her over here one, one meeting so she can meet everybody. Working towards Stuart's goal of a, a group that would explore and work on, uh, let's say equality equity, uh, in the, in the community, uh, I have spoken with, um, Richard Morris, uh, who I mentioned last week at the work session, Mr. Morris portrayed John Yancy in one of our spirit walks a couple of years ago, and his daughter Raven, who has just graduated from Old Dominion University with engineering degree, she's a published author and they live in the Esmont area and they are very interested in working with, uh, with Mr. Munson on what he might put together in the way of, we call it, right now, we're just calling it Equity Committee, see what happens. Um, that's just about everything on my list. Um, anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you. I have a meeting tomorrow with someone regarding, uh, a, a town issue, which is not a serious issue yet, but we want to meet tomorrow and I'll, I'm not gonna go into it until after the meeting, but I'll let you know what happened. Um, report starting number five, of course, we charter committees, planning commission and architecture review board. Uh, Dan, if you had time to catch your breath, would you like to report anything else on your committee?
Main thing you've already heard is we have had contact with people on the committee who are open to those who are interested in joining us both in the issues related to general town education, which is what you see, and then the bigger issue to talk to the actual parks, it's also the nature area. That is the main thing at the moment and given it's the middle of the summertime, the one advertisement I might say is, those of you familiar with the nature area or those who are not, might not remember that, the Department of Game and Fishery stocks the lake with trout, which is usually people fish it up in fall, winter and spring, they're not summer fish, but they also stock it with catfish, and this would be a good time of the year to test your angling skills, see if you can pull out some of those catfishes. Besides the ones that are just as a reminder, it's stocked, this has been, I believe, the third year they stock it once a year, so it's probably a pretty good sized catfish.
They don't have any of those hundred pounders like we catch down in Richmond, do they?
No, the big ones are in the river.
Yeah, that's amazing to catch these hundred plus pound catfish down the ground.
Now, with the James here, sometimes they catch bigger catfishes, I mean, not, not one of those. Yeah, if people are interested in volunteering through your committee, is that something that they don't necessarily need to be involved in like the big picture stuff, that they could be on the mountain, is that something? There's two, yeah, certainly, just notify the town office and Matt can put them in with me and there's both the actual planning things that we do and then there's actually this work case, so either way, where any way that you want to help, we're having good input or positive or negative, so we want to serve everything.
Thank you, appreciate that. Ms. Malusi?
Um, so Events and Tourism Committee wanted to give a shout out to the Java Senior Center, Scottsville Senior Center, it's hosting an event on July twenty-ninth at the Pavilion. Um, they did a great successful event in Esmont last month of handing out some goodie bags to the seniors to reach out and to make some contact, thanks to chief's help in escorting them. Our seniors are more spread out in this area and so we're inviting them here and they plan to distribute some ice cream at that day, so if you would like to join, stop by in July twenty-ninth. Also coming up a month later is town road cleanup. So this is our, and actually from the spring annual cleanup that was postponed until August due to COVID. Uh, we are planning to do another sort of B dot cleanup on all the entrance corridors in town. There was considerable suspicion, very timely, also about doing gardening and other kinds of work and the need of potentially setting something up through our committee where we can have signups once a month. So it sounds like there are several of us here at the table as well as several of you out in the audience who would be very interested in that, um, so we can definitely get the ball rolling with, you know, postings and setting up the signup and so forth, and then maybe take turns on actually leading those efforts. So would love to talk more about that, but that was something that also came up in our discussion. Um, for the music event, as you know, we haven't had a lot of music going on in town. Um, typically, typically we submit a grant to Bama Works to help support music for all of our seasons all year long. They have redistributed their funds on to the Community Recovery Fund, um, to the Charlottesville Area Community Fund. That doesn't mean a bad thing, that actually means that there's a really good conversation that we can have. Um, one of the ideas that the committee discussed would maybe re-targeting our funds for music to support five local venues, since we can't do a big gathering, right? We know that we get populations of four hundred or more for music, that we could basically provide the funds to have a musician play at the brewery, have a musician play performers on it, have a musician, you know, play a meet you, right? So kind of spread the wealth because we also know that our businesses can't do that and it would help them out. So that's a discussion that we have that we very much would like to get off the ground and do plans to pull that in with some other ideas. Some of the other ideas that we discussed, um, and would love to hear kind of some feedback on this, is, um, as you know, when there are floods, the fire department is a hundred percent volunteer effort to respond to the alarm and manage the flood system aside from our manager. They oftentimes are up all night long and so there are a few people that will run out and get food. We don't have a lot of restaurants that are open twenty-four hours. Um, this is something that happens on a regular basis and so one of the other proposals to put forward, to put into the Community Recovery Act is maybe some plans for when there are floods, that we could basically sponsor the food for the volunteers overnight in that gap where there's not anything. So, you know, it could be snacks and, and drinks and things like that, that we could stock ahead of time and they will wear needed where the repository that makes sure that we deliver. Um, the other, the last idea was a discussion about those that are in isolation, they have trouble getting to doctor's appointments, um, they have trouble getting just basic food resources. As you know, our two few cantors are feeling quite stressed right now, um, and I do anticipate as we go into the school year with some of the school discussions that that will continue to be stressful. I don't know what the answer is, but I do know in some other communities, um, that I've looked at comparable size, they do have organized efforts and help support in some way with a grant to ensure some food distribution for some of these individuals. Again, I don't know the answer, I don't know the act, it's just something that has come up a couple of times in conversation, definitely not in our committee for discussion. Um, we also, in terms of the maintenance, we actually physically discussed a map to help clarify what's town responsibility, what's the parks and recreation responsibility, what's CSX responsibility, what's B dot responsibility and what's resident and business responsibility because it's incredibly confusing. So I spent a draft of that to tell them, I'm not sure that it's open for, uh, to, to share necessarily, but I think that in the work session, we should definitely have a routine look at that and get that clarified for ourselves as well as share it with the community. And so that was the conversation. Finally, how many of you have looked at our website? Have you noticed anything different? So a huge shout out to, this Kelly Cruse, one of our volunteers, working with Matt, Molly and Divine in the background, along with our scene thing partner in getting that website revamped. Um, it's, it's a big focus on tourism and hope, and making, um, governance more easy to find, so if you haven't checked it out, please go to it, give us your feedback, um, help, you know, try and look for something, see if there's things there that you want to find, and if not, if you would please email me, because this is a work in progress, but I'm very excited that it's up and running. Um, there's some great new images, again, a little bit new navigation, but the focus is really to help promote Scottsville, to help promote our businesses and to make it user friendly so that those of you who want to become engaged in the community can actually find the information, see when we're meeting, look for our notes and, and be able to find information. In the past, it was rather difficult to do, so we wanted to fix that.
And that's.
It is, that's what that works, it's easy to remember, yeah, 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 yeah. And that is my official.
Any other questions for Laura?
Hey.
I'll just say, I, I got a, an email from Java the other day and depending on how the numbers go, they are planned to open our senior center back up on September the eighth. Whether that'll happen or not, because we're one of the red states again, when six thirty news, ABC news showed us as one of the states where it's increasing. Now, it's mainly increasing in Northern Virginia and the beach, but, uh, at one of the meetings I was at the other day, I was told we have had thirty-one confirmed cases in our zip code. There's a code takes northern Buckingham and part of Fu Van over here, uh, still thirty-one cases, thirty-one cases. On the other topic of the flood control system, I don't imagine Mr. Car, who's sitting in the audience, would mind if somebody came by with food and drink during the course of the shift. I said, I don't imagine, first of all, I appreciate all you do down at Levy when we have a flood issue.
I do too.
Yeah, but I don't think you would object if a group came by with something to eat and something to drink, would you? I think that's the least that we could do. So, thank you, Laura. Just a question. You got something else?
Yeah, um, Economic Development Committee, um, as the mayor alluded to, we are, um, starting to take a look at how we can reach out, um, to surrounding communities and engage with them and, and encourage them to visit Scottsville. And, um, we, uh, we've heard that, that, well, we know that there's not as much traffic here from places like, um, Esmont and, uh, Lake Monticello, parts of Buckingham, that we would. Esmont and Lake Monticello, parts of Buckingham that we would like. And being a market researcher at heart, I want to find out why that is. And I think there are several hypotheses out there about why that is. But I think the first effort of our community, of our committee is going to be to see if we can reach out to these communities and find out what the perceptions of Scottsville are and what we might be able to do to encourage people to visit town. So in the process of putting together a committee to do that, mayor is helping me, Mr. Tachi is going to be on that as well too. And I would encourage anyone who's interested to reach out to me, love to have you. And as we identify what some of those reasons are, we can start to put together some initiatives to see if we can welcome people or invite people, more people into Scottsville. So we're just sort of at the very beginning stage of that and more to stay tuned, more next month.
Any, any questions for Mr. Munson? I will say to you, I was searching around the internet the other day for something and I came across a document that was formulated in 1948 by the United Nations and it was signed by the United States and about 47 other countries at that time. It's called the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And if you really want to read something interesting, go to the website, just Google Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And it really spells it out like it should be, not necessarily like it is, but like it should be. Okay, well, Mr. Tachi is going to be our representative with the Planning Commission and I didn't know if you had anything going to address to that issue, that group, or if you have anything else on your mind you want to talk about.
Just, yeah, briefly, I sat through the last planning mission meeting. Participated because I wasn't part of it just yet. So we had some discussion at our work session that we're going to take some feedback on, particularly the small area plan in an effort to move that forward. So I have feedback from Zach so far, I'm still waiting feedback from anybody else who has any thoughts on the subject. So I welcome that and writings that helps me kind of formulate how I'm addressing it. So we'll try to push some, some good movement through on that. The only other thing, it's not related to planning commission, but I did have a conversation with the Deputy Commonwealth Attorney with the, in regards to the dismissal of some of the tickets. And apparently they're not doing that, so I think that's.
I'll check with the chief tomorrow if it's short. Also, speaking about the small area plan, when I met with Karen Firecock over at the new business across the street and she is primarily in the area, elected by the West Small Dr. Area Plan. I gave her a copy and her job is planning, her job is to be in planning. So she said she would look over and, you know, I used to say that she would like to have. It's another set of eyes on the document.
I plan on having some, some community dialogue before the next planning commission meeting, get some feedbacks and I'll make a point to reach out to her as well.
And I see Supervisor Price in the audience. Supervisor Price?
Hello, Mayor.
Hey, you got any words to go to the board of the light?
Well, I don't, I don't know about that, but congratulations on your election and Mr. Tachi for yours as well. Also to the reelection of the other town council members. I do have a few things I'd like to share with the town council. A couple of kind of quick notes. Scottsville Water Treatment Plant is going to get some upgrades, so very excited about that. Century Link and the Albemarle Broadband Authority have combined and they're working on a project right now that will be completed by March of next year. 850 residents and businesses in Albemarle County are going to be getting fiber optic installed and the vast majority of those are in South Albemarle in the Scottsville District. I retain my hope for one day being able to get a convenience center in South Albemarle County. Obviously, any hope for that right now is on hold, given the economic situation with the pandemic. Cole's Rolling Road paving is still ongoing, so that looks good. I did, there are two things I really did want to talk with the town council about. As you know, the Board of Supervisors will be having a special meeting on Wednesday to talk about pandemic. The, the state has recently gone from phase two to phase three and we're very concerned about the overall pandemic situation in the Thomas Jefferson Health District. So since last Wednesday, which was our regularly scheduled board, we've been reaching out to the Virginia Department of Health. Our staff has been trying to consult with the City Council of Charlottesville and the University of Virginia. And I want to make sure that I engage with the Town Council of Scottsville to get your thoughts on what, what you recommend that we on the Board of Supervisors do with regard to this phase two, phase three issue. Recognizing there's a difference between what we might legally be able to do versus what we practically are able to actually enforce. I believe I can speak for the board that our hope is to have a consensus with the town of Scottsville, the city of Charlottesville, UVA, Albemarle County with information and advice from the Department of Health to have a consolidated, coordinated, we'll call it a regional approach. Overall, we're not doing as bad as many areas in the Commonwealth are doing as, Mayor, I believe you may have mentioned just a few moments ago. Yet at the same time, we do see, we have seen a bit of a spike. I think we're all concerned about how the schools are going to actually operate this coming year. So I'm open tonight to hear any thoughts that you have, any wisdom that you can impart to me that I can bring back to the Board of Supervisors. But I also would encourage you to, if you have thoughts that come up after tonight, email me so I can share that with other members of the board. Additionally, and I believe Mr. Doug Walker recently just reached out to Matt to ensure that the town of Scottsville is fully engaged with Albemarle County on everything related to the pandemic. And in particular, I want to make sure that if there are any cares, funding that we can send down to the town of Scottsville, you know, we want to be able to work to try and get that. So with that, what I'd like to do is now and over the next couple of days, be open to input and information and your thoughts. I mean, should we look at going back to phase two? We recognize that there are health benefits of doing that, but there are also economic consequences. So I really would appreciate your thoughts on this. And Mayor Smith, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here at your town council.
What up? Is it, can you hear me Supervisor?
Not real well, but I'm going to do my best.
Okay. A couple of different things. First of all, I would say one of the main things that this pandemic is clear is that the people at the greatest risk really haven't changed. It's people over 65 and anybody with an underlying health condition. That seems to have been true. What seems to have changed a little bit in Virginia, and I will say this is my loose studying of the numbers, is that when the cases first started manifesting themselves a number of months ago, if you look at the breakdown by demographics, originally the largest category happened to be the category that I'm in, the 50 to 59 year age group. It was for two or three months, that was the number one group. It then dropped to the 40s, the 30s, and currently right now, as of today, the 20 to 29 and the 30 to 39 are extremely close. And there's been a decent rise, I believe it's up to 8% now, close to 8% for the 10 to 19 year old age. And what I have heard, not just from our state, but also from other states, has been this shift to younger ages. And the younger ages that has happened in Virginia is probably predictable in the sense that you can speculate as to why that is, but the numbers have clearly moved down. That's, that's, that's clear by looking at the numbers. I see you're shaking your head, you see those numbers also. The other thing that we know demographically is that I believe the number right now, and again, I'm, I'm just doing it off the top of my head, is around 42% of the people that have COVID are people of Hispanic backgrounds. So it's very, very high. The Hispanics are something like 9% of the states and they have 42% of the cases. So one of the things I was going to say, as a county, I think it'd be very wise as a county to do what we could do to really reach out to that population that's been really devastated by this. Because it's very unique and the parts of the county that have high concentrations of Hispanic people, it would make a lot of sense since they've been so dramatically impacted. I mean, there is something like four to five times their actual percent of the state are impacted. So I think the most obvious thing by far, if I were to say, should the supervisors do anything? I would say that the numbers would say that we should reach out. I think the phase is the wrong thing to focus on because honestly, the phase two or three is, from a business standpoint, I would much rather us to be in phase three. But the need that you see is really two, there's two things happening. It's the younger movement of the numbers and then it's this clobbering of the Hispanic community. Their numbers are a little better than they were a few weeks ago. They were up in the 44, 45% range a couple of weeks ago. But I would just say again, as a county, I would say reaching out to that demographic. Then the other thing would be, I think our mayor was talking about this before. I think it's much more important for us to call on people's goodwill than it is for us to mandate things. In other words, if you call on the goodwill of people and how important it is. In fact, I, that's part of the reason I did what I did. I wrote five articles on behalf of people here, trying to encourage people to live within the guidelines. And my focus was not on what the government would do. In fact, I'm a very partisan person and I did not take shots at anybody, so to speak. I have lots of people I could take shots at. But my point is, I think we need to work together to come up with solutions. So, so my suggestion again is, I think it's great that the supervisors are asking for our opinion on just one voice here. I really think it's important that we recognize the devastation that's happened to our businesses throughout the county. From my perspective, maybe my, my, one of my friends said that I have the unique strange view on COVID-19 is that I accept the pandemic for what it is and the best that I understand the numbers. And on the other hand, I've tried every way that I could possibly think of to try to beat it or get around it or try to encourage people to live as successfully as they can in the midst of it. At the same time, having an 82 year old mother and an 80 year old mother-in-law that I'm very concerned about their wellbeing and the people who are in high risk, like they are, trying to make sure that we protect them. So other, the other thing I would say, which we would do as a county, that we would really implore people to do things that are the most protective of the people who are the most vulnerable. And then the other one, obviously, having had two daughters with cancer in my, in my family, there are also people, other ages, who are vulnerable that might not be as easy to know that there's vulnerabilities, but it's wise for all of us to live in such a way that we are careful for others. So at any rate, that, those are my suggestions.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. And you know, I think one, you, you've probably hit on one of the main areas that has raised the concern and that is the coming influx of, you know, how many thousands of UVA students may be coming back? Because it does appear that it's the younger demographic now that has in particular feed of the social distancing. I, I do know that UVA is going, is planning a very hard, strict approach to how they plan on handling students coming back to the university. But I, I think from a lot of the communications I've received from constituents, they echo very, very similarly what you have expressed, that most of our local residents have been pretty diligent and compliant in terms of health protections, but great concern with a great influx of a large number of young adults coming in. And, and thank you for sharing that. I, I would love to hear from anyone else on this.
Hi Laura.
Do you mind if I go?
No, go for it.
So it's interesting, in terms of getting the town feedback, we are unique in that we service residents that are in two different health districts and three to four different counties. So we're, we're balancing a sort of bigger question than just the county question, which has relevance, why? Because whatever decision the county makes, whether phase two, phase three are moving forward, may or may not have direct impacts on our emergency services. So I just ask that we ensure that that's maintained. But it also, I, I would want to ask that whatever happens, that we keep our businesses and our farmers in mind. Because right now, what really works well for a rural community is that we have enabled local shopping, that we support our, our local businesses, which means that our footprint is smaller and we're having less of a COVID spread. And if we take that away, we suddenly have people from Nelson County, Savannah County and Buckingham County infiltrating Albemarle County to get their basic services met. Whereas right now, those needs are being met very well within the local community. So if we can continue to find ways to support our local businesses, our local farmers and meet those basic local needs within the rural communities, I think it will strengthen how we approach the COVID-19 ahead of us. The other point, when I listened to a meeting, a town hall and schools, and they are considering a hybrid model and an in-person model. One of the most helpful things for me to hear was for one of the Board of School, the school board members saying, we encourage virtual because it will allow for those that don't have internet or that really need access to the education to get it in a safer way. And that was the first time I'd ever seen in print or had ever heard that recommendation. And I think the more that we can encourage our residents to help enable access to better health, access to more food, access to a better education by doing our part, the more successful we will all be. So those are my thoughts. Again, we're a town that represents a multitude, not just one county. And that's really important when asking for what we think to keep in mind.
Thank you, Counselor, and I was very pleased to see that with the schools as well because as we know, the school system is way more than education. It's daycare for working families or single parents. It's food for children who may not have better nutrition at home. And as you just mentioned, a lot of people don't have internet access. So those who do, if they are able to rely more upon virtual, then that does provide a safer environment for a smaller number of individuals who have no other choices. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Mr. Bullock, did you have something?
I did, I just wanted to extend something that Mayor Smith mentioned earlier as one of his priorities. And you can correct me if I, if I misrepresent you. But there's an interest in how we get creative about encouraging consistent mask wearing in places of business in our area. And I think, because I think I've seen a lot of it. But I also know that people are making business decisions about where they spend their money based on how safe they perceive a place to be. And mask wearing is a really fundamental component of our health and safety right now. So the mask thing has sort of become for me also an economic issue. And that if we're wearing masks consistently in places of business, people are going to be more likely to go there because they're going to feel like that's a safe space to be while they spend their money. So whether we're in phase two or phase three, I think that's going to be an important thing for us to advocate for and to support so that our local businesses get as much foot traffic as they can.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that.
Anything else, Mr. Tachi? You have anything? We're good, any, any other comments for Supervisor Price?
Yeah, I would, Stuart Munson here, just would like to encourage you to think about ways to de-politicize this. I know that in some ways, wearing a mask, or some people perceive wearing a mask as a political statement. And it, I, I like to think it's because they don't. they don't realize the health of, the health ramifications of, of the disease, and that wearing a mask is, is the same as, as, you know, protecting a child, or, you know, taking food to somebody who's hungry. It, it's a way for us as citizens to safeguard and to protect the most vulnerable people in our, in our society. And people are dying from this. And, and I think it's, it's important to, to position this as a service, as Mr. Gritzko said, as a service to, you know, our community, and in a way of taking care of people, rather than trying to enforce it in some kind of rule or another. But I think there's a, there's just a, an educational aspect of that, and we can figure out a way to articulate that very concisely, and, and very ba, in a very basic way, then I think compliance would increase a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. You know, with regard to masks, I experienced a, a very serious average, adverse childhood experience, where I nearly suffocated. And as a result of that, you know, I'm terribly claustrophobic. I, I have some anxiety over breathing issues, and find it difficult for me to wear a mask for extended periods of time, particularly in hot weather. And I, I, I don't say that as an excuse. I do wear my mask when I'm out in public, but I recognize that I, and there are other individuals who have difficulty with masks, just like there are other things that people have experienced, that, that is a challenge to them. And I've been appreciative of the respect that I believe most of our residents have expressed to other individuals, while trying to ensure the greatest degree of compliance. I, I am very fortunate that I have worked from home for the last eleven years, I guess now, and even now with the pandemic, I do most, most things at home. And my hat literally goes off to those workers who are required to wear a mask for eight, nine, ten hours during a workday, because that, to me, would be so challenging. And I think we need to really continue to express our appreciation for those who are on the front line, whether it be healthcare workers, first responders, or the people working as the clerks in the stores, which are so critical to our ability when we engage in foot traffic at businesses, for them to be able to continue to operate. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. We thank you for joining us tonight. What I'm going to suggest to the council members is, how about jotting all your thoughts down, and shoot them to Supervisor Price in an email. That way she will have them for her, if that's okay with Supervisor.
Absolutely. And I apologize for being a little late. It's, my daughter's thirty-eighth birthday, and we did have a family dinner tonight, but I was, I'm glad to be able to join you. And I look forward to getting more input from you. As you may have noticed, I was making notes during the meeting, so I can work to make a presentation on, on kind of a report to the board on Wednesday from the town of Scottsdale. So thank you very much for letting me be a part of your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item number six. Matt, you wanna tell us how we go about this particular item, as far as, do we need motions? Do we just pass it? Or everybody, I was, I asked everybody last week at the work session, that if you were not happy with your committee assignments, let me know. I heard, heard the go ones, so I'm assuming that everybody is good with their, what they're doing, and what the people aren't doing that. So.
All right. Thank you, sir. As far as committee assignments go, the only ones that were a little unclear to me were the ones that Mr. Peck was vacating, and Mr. Tachi, the new council member, has the opportunity to pick those up if you're interested. That is the farmer's market, as well as the planning commission. We also had some movement on the Government Services Committee. Ms. Malusi, you expressed some interest in that one. So that's how I understand it. Everyone keeps their same committee assignment, except Mr. Peck's go to Mr. Tachi, except Government Services go to Ms. Malusi. And.
Mr. Malusi, do all that?
A motion be in order to assign the committee chairs.
I think most of that we do is what I.
All right.
Because this just came up in email from, I think, Friday, was involved in the market meetings or anything like that. I'm assuming.
So we have farmer market manager, LaSta. The council role of that is outreach, outreach and liaison beyond the staff role. So end of season meeting, and tip off, helping a little bit with promotion of the farmer's market, and checking in with vendors in the public, an extra level of council accountability on the market staff, because it's such an important thing.
I'll be honest with you, with having taken on three Mondays a night, which probably more than I want to tackle at this point. My, my own business, it's been, it's a little taxing to dusting all this. I'm happy to fill it in temporarily, but someone else takes it. I have a meeting I still have to post at the hall.
So I, I mean, the market manager's a member of my committee, and so I, I'm willing to talk with her, just to see if we can maybe work something out where she can do reports, and that way, and then if you need a representative, I'm happy to either let somebody else know so that we have a representative there. That's also another option.
That sounds good. So you're willing to?
I'm willing to work out, to work out.
Okay. There's a lot of the farmer's market events turning to counties.
They do. Yeah, which is why, yeah.
And I think.
We're already meeting together once the month's over.
Yeah. And I, I think, first of all, most of us go down on Saturday anyhow. We all know Debbie will. And I think any of us up here would be happy to help if you needed something. Go ahead and just call and say, can you see Debbie, or can you do this? And I think we'd all.
I mean, I can tell you right now, if the biggest thing we need is if they ever do events, I need all of them to talk. And if you don't see the market, I need to just go in and support the market. But that's, yeah, otherwise.
I was still a flashback from when they came in the market.
But Debbie does all of this. So she's, she's really got to come on.
Okay. So committees are set, then? We had a motion, and a second, and the other discussion?
Do we need to change this with proper, or is that okay?
As, as amended by.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Those, good. Committees are set.
Your, your other organizational order is the vice mayor's question.
According to the town code, we elect a president of the town council, who serves as the vice mayor. So I will open up nominations for vice mayor slash president of the council position.
I would like to nominate the eleventh.
Case, is there a, I will second. Any further nominations? A discussion?
It, it has been the tradition of the council that we have the person who gets the most votes. That's been a tradition. And I think it's made sense to keep it. So I'd like to keep, all right, royal of that role.
But town codes, you have to elect a person who serves as vice mayor. So.
So we're electing.
We're electing. So we'll take a vote. If there's further instructions, all in favor, Laura, being our president slash.
Can we just?
Important ceremony. Mr. Runt, do you care?
I think he's asleep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had, had my headphones on mute, not my screen. Mr. Gritzko?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Malusi?
I accept.
Thank you. Mr. Munson?
And definitely.
Thank you. Mr. Tachi?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Okay. The, another before, before we get to the staff, of course, the last second item under number six is fiscal agent for here. Here is, everybody knows what here is, but it's the health equity and access for rural residents. And when I met with those folks the other day, they are getting grant money and donations, and it's a pretty significant amount of money, but they need some organization to be, to, to hold that money for them as a safeguard against any shenanigans, let's put it that way. So we have what we'd like to do, and Matt can explain how it works, in the bookkeeping department. If you'd like to do that now for the.
We, we have an unused checking account available from previous projects that should be converted to this purpose. If you wanted to act as the fiscal agent for here, to be a clear enhance for their grant funding, we have the accounting ability to do that. It would just need a budget appropriation to end of year to reconcile everything, money in, money out, so it wouldn't conflict with other town farms that have its own account. We can support that if that's something that we could do.
They have received something like $10,000 for water purification systems to be distributed to in rural areas to people on wells. And so they need somewhere to park this money, and someone to oversee it in and out. So any questions? Matt can answer the questions. I'll just, and bring it in before the council.
Is this set up similar to what Canal Basin Square had several years ago?
It is.
And is this, is this management of fiscal funds something that the town staff believes that they can do with other responsibilities?
It's a small number of transactions.
And is here expected to develop their own board and nonprofit status at any point?
I don't.
All right. So my follow-up question was, if they did, how would that, how would that transition happen if they were to become their own entity at some future time?
If they were to get that incorporation, set up their own board and account, then they might not need this anymore, and you could transfer the funds and, and this relationship. But I don't know the timeframe.
So can you explain what this organization is? It's sort of, it sounds like they have an off-line status. It's yet.
Couple of years ago, a group of concerned citizens got together and focused on health care for Southern Alvin Laurel. It used to be, that was Southern Alvin Laurel, but then it started to encompass the surrounding areas. So it's, they named it Health Equity and Access for Rural Residents. And last year, you may remember, they did the water testing program, whereas water testing normally costs fifty or sixty dollars. They were able to get it done for five dollars a shot, and did something like, what, a hundred and some water testing.
Yeah. They did sports physicals for local families. They helped sponsor local health fairs, with all the partners. They do one at Esmont in the spring, and then they do one in Scottsville in the fall. And they've also have a current grant where they're pulling the impacts of COVID on, on rural families, on community members, to get sort of a really tangible survey results on where the gaps are, where their needs are, and then to not just assess them, but actually develop programs to serve them, is the, is the long-term view.
So I guess my follow-up question is, like, what is their, what is their structure and organization? What are the implications of us being involved in that? Does the money go out every year back to them, back to us, as a hero? Or I'm just curious to know, what does this unusual situation?
Well, like Matt said, it's, it's the old Canal Basin Square, where we just set on the money, and if it was needed for something, then it went out to that need at Canal Basin Square. Grant money, there's your list of, of the members of the committee.
So I guess I'm just curious, what is, what is the restrictions for men opening their own base account, and having?
The way it was explained to me, there's.
I'm just curious to know the reasoning behind this. That sounds like they do good work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they feel like, while there's no, no problems with them handling their own money, they feel more comfortable if a third party is overseeing the safekeeping of those funds, maybe. So where you.
Another thing, another way I might say it, Jim, was, this was a project that Nancy has really fought for for a while. And, and in her effort in that regard, she really saw it as a way of serving as the town, really encompassing a much larger area. And it seems a safe way to protect those funds, to, in a sense, free them to do their work, and let us take care of a little bit of accounting. It, it is asking us to do something that's unusual, but at the same time, we've done other things like this before, where we are a steward of those resources to, again, free them to do their work. So anyways, I, I think it makes sense. But your question's a good question.
They're great questions. So one of the important things is that oftentimes, many of the funding sources they're looking at are, need to be in partnership with a town or government entity, or another partner. And so in the past, that has been the town. And I think that there is interest in that continuing. But basically, having a partnership with us allows them to be eligible to receive these larger sorts of the funds. It's not the same as, but the town also is the fiscal receiver of a large grant to the fire department every year. It passes through the town, and then back to the fire department. And so in most cases, it would be funds that would pass through the town back out through here.
Same as with Friends of Scottville, right? Money goes into there.
Well, that's not developed. So that is, that's different, in that Friends of Scottville would be a nonprofit that would have been, that could fundraise for other projects outside of town, so it wouldn't be managed in the same way that a town government. This is still with public oversight. We would be accountable to all the state regulations, all those things. It's still.
Is there, is there a situation with times of the essence here, where they'd be willing to send somebody to kind of present the thought process behind this, maybe at a work session?
I don't, I actually don't know. There's a grant pending right now.
Thought they were interested in getting it done as soon as possible.
I've heard that as well, but I don't know if they have a specific deadline coming out here. Six days is more important.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
I support that.
I don't have any specific concern regarding this. It's just an unusual situation. On it, like, I'm just still better than that.
I think that's a great suggestion. Yes, and have them do a formal presentation.
So are we tabling that till next time?
With pleasure.
Do you want to take a vote on it, or tonight, the a or nay, or do we want to have a motion to table it and take it up next month?
If, if we feel like, if we feel like it's something that really needs to be pushed through our cabinet, kind of, so sidelined, like, finish this on the subject, and at least have a chance to button that back.
I think that's not a bad idea to, to let it happen. Unless, do you see any reservation for real, if it's not going to happen?
Um. I think it would behoove the town, members of town council, to hear a formal presentation from the entity that wants us to give their funds. It is a good government practice.
So with that being suggested, do I hear a motion that we table this until next council meeting, and have one of their representatives speak to us at that meeting?
I knew that we table this, and have one of their representatives come and present their proposal to us at our next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Oh, we'll take a call. Do, do we need to poll?
That can be a voice vote, but who had the second?
Jim.
Thank you.
So I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passes, that we will carry this over to next time. Staff reports, and we try to start with Mr., Mr. Tom. Who do you want to go first?
Matt, you go ahead.
Okay, sir. Couple of items to share, and I, I think we had a lot of this covered elsewhere. You, you heard all of the details on the state of COVID in our region. We have zip code level, but not in-town data. And anyone suffering from COVID much in our thoughts, as well as those affected by job loss, and the simple disruption of the great unknown of the school year. Principal England is doing a good job with local outreach, and trying to gather local information to share with the superintendent and the school board. So parents and families can certainly share that data up on as the school board and board of supervisors make their decisions. But they're looking out for us here. We have our local. We have our local state of emergency continuing, and under current law, that, uh, local emergency legislation needs to be renewed every two months. So we would be due for that at our August meeting. The August meeting falls one day before a special assembly, a special general assembly session called by the governor. Our meeting is on a Monday, the assembly convenes on the Tuesday. I expect they will take up the matter of the emergency legislation. As every locality is in a similar boat of, um, what was originally designed to be short-term emergency legislation is getting longer and longer term. So we'll probably see some legislative guidance before the end of August, but we'll need to act at least one more time on our local emergency legislation at the August meeting. And, uh, that's the, that's the law that lets us meet, um, in this fashion remotely, and, um, modify our local government operations that way. The general assembly will also take up a number of, um, criminal justice and civil rights bills. Um, I haven't seen details of that legislation yet, but I'd invite you to follow the news. And if that's, um, something that, um, would have an impact on the town, um, either, either budget-wise or in view of your vision for how we operate, certainly something where we have a moment before the assembly session starts where we could stay our position. And the Virginia Municipal League is helping with, um, outreach on that. Sometimes the general assembly moves on these bills without thinking about the budget or operational impacts on small towns. Um, and so we have a, um, a lobbyist in our corner at the municipal league who can help us with this. Supervisor Price mentioned the, um, cares funding coming through the town. The, the board's vote at their last meeting included a, um, percentage share of their cares funding for the town. That is $50,000, um, based on our population within Admiral County. That certainly helps, and it is a larger number than what is in your budget. We, uh, we knew some federal help was coming, but we didn't know how much it would be when we adopted our budget. So that's good news, but it has some strings attached as far as what it can be used for. It can't just fill our budget gap. It has to be special programming related to the pandemic. There are some guidelines out there around the state and a lot of creativity as far as how we help with the human services and, um, small business needs. But, um, we'll get some contract guidance on that from Admiral County around what use of funds they will accept, because we need to follow all the same audit guidelines that they do as they pass this funding through to us. So I'll know more about that in the next couple of weeks. Please. No, please.
Process for determining what the cares. Is that something that you're ready to count, council, determine, or are you going to present ideas to us or help that work?
By all means both. Um, absent any feedback, I'll, um, I'll put a recommended package together based on what I'm seeing. But by all means, reach out, talk to businesses and families, and, um, work on the brainstorm with me of what you think's going to be meaningful. Um, just spent before December 31st, so we don't have to rush a package. We can get it designed the way we need to, it just needs to be spent before the end of December.
I'd like to see the marketing base.
Of course.
Your administrative knowledge of the process, maybe, um, our town attorneys.
Sure. Absolutely. You'll see the, um, outreach out there for, um, small business grant programs through the county economic development department. They're making a number of small grants, uh, 10 to $50,000 for businesses with between 1 and 100 employees. So that, uh, application window is up now. That's something that we could piggyback on, but there's lots of other things that we could do with it too. So something to ask around and think about. We have a, um, I'm, pardon. Okay, we have a, um, another grant matter with, um, feedback requested. A couple of weeks ago, we got, um, notice of award from VDOT for sidewalk grant funding. This was an application the council supported back in October for about five blocks of sidewalk construction and improvement in the west downtown neighborhood, uh, basically going from the farmer's mo, farmer's market to the other end of the levee walk past the library in an L shape on Harrison and Bird Streets. It's a $320,000 VDOT grant award with a local match of $80,000. VDOT and its outreach has found that a lot of localities are having second thoughts about these grants because of the state of their local budgets. And so VDOT has invited us to veto or withdraw our project prior to contracting, if we're so inclined. And they'll move further down their scoring list and award the funding to other places. It's a, it's happy to talk in more detail about the project if you'd like, but unfortunately, they, they want that first go-no-go decision before, um, August 1st. So if it feels like, um, special meeting topic to go over this project in more detail, we could certainly call the special meeting or take some time and discussion on it now. But it's a, um, it's an unfortunate short-term decision for VDOT.
Yeah, I, I would say we need a, a, a special session on that. It's a, it's a, it's a really important project, I think, for the town, uh, in terms of its future development, as well as just supporting current residents and businesses. But the $80,000 price tag is, I don't know, it sounds big, but maybe it's manageable over time. And I, I think we should talk about it in a more focused way in relation to other capital improvement projects we've discussed recently.
Uh, I'm offshore week starting Wednesday, that's it.
What do you think about the 30th? 30th of July, the only, about 40 to 50.
Perfect. I'm, I can.
Okay, there, Robert?
Time, time in place. 7:00. This, this time?
7:00, 6:00, okay, Greg?
A little earlier.
I'm about 7:00.
Okay, um, and I will, um, I will get some project details out to you, um, before, before I clock out, so that you can look at the design, the budget and all, and refresh that. We had some focus on it in September, but, uh, a lot's changed since then.
I think maybe now change that for women. So, Matt and Chad, we've got to really do this more in the other person. There's some things that make the $80,000 fair. We'll, we'll get into that later, but while you're awake, you're awake.
Thomas and Alex, sorry. Yeah.
Uh, the only thing I would add to that, you may have heard that the, um, state recently passed a new ordinance, called the Emergency Temporary Standard, that lays out workplace safety regulations, uh, related to COVID-19. Uh, they have not released the full text of that yet. OSHA is working up how their policies are going to respond to it. And our insurance company has promised us that they will look at, uh, uh, models of what those types of, um, return-to-work policies, uh, workplace safety policies and other things should look like for us. So, um, all we've heard from the state so far is that the new ordinance, uh, categorizes, um, different jobs into different risk categories, um, and will require, uh, return-to-work policy and a policy about how to stay away from work once you've tested positive. So we'll update you guys on all of that as we get, uh, more information about what those policies should look like and move closer to having them in place, but expect that to come in the next month or so, probably.
I've got a training workshop on it tomorrow through our insurance.
There you go. Already rolling. And, uh, uh, Chief Bo Winkle informed me today that, uh, the court clerk has told him the first $30 from the digit ticket, uh, collection fees has come through. So we will, uh, uh, create it. That's another thing that will need a separate bank account, uh, to be kept independent of our general fund. So we'll have that set up shortly and, uh, ready to go.
Okay.
May I ask a couple of questions on staff?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Bullock.
Well, really, one is, one is just an add-on and one is a question, but, uh, one deals with grants related to improvements in the historic overlay district. The grants for our facade improvement program have been starting to move. Matt can tell you more about the contingencies of that grant right now, but I know the Jameser Brewery has replaced their roof with, um, money that was awarded through that grant. And I feel very pleased that some of that work has begun. Uh, Matt, what's the, can you remind council what the, uh, stipulations are with that grant funding currently?
It's a, um, it's a grant from, uh, the Virginia MHD program through the House Office. It was a $7,000 grant in the state awarded back in the fall of last year. They've expected that due to COVID. In March, the ARB made five grants ranging between $1,000 and $5,000 to historic businesses with a 50/50 match from this authority. Two of the five projects are completed, the other three are on hold until contractors become more available or the small business finances open up a little bit. But we have expected completion from all of those property in the next few months.
That was good. So that, I'm super pleased about that. Um, oh wait, I'm hearing myself. Okay, um, I'm echoing in, in council chambers. The question I have though, Matt, um, following our really positive interaction with CSX back in June, have you any had, have you had any follow-up with the DEQ about the formal herbicide complaint related to the video we have of spraying?
That inspection is complete, and I got the, I got the inspection completion document from them. Their process for getting the completed reports is a little cumbersome, and they invited me to make a FOIA request of them to get the completed report. So I was doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Bullock?
No, thank you.
Okay, anything else from all those at the?
I think, I guess.
Yes.
We missed a planning commission.
Okay.
The, uh, the planning commission is one member short of its full strength.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Burkhead, uh, moving out of town, so there's a hundred and five in the term, but there's still one more here. He posted that, uh, call for applications and noticed it, and we had one. And, uh, Ms. Shannon Strossner is here with us this evening, and that's something that the, um, we, it lets you say a few words. Uh, that's something the council could act on if it, if you're questioning.
Sure. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Uh, my name is Shannon Strossner, and I'm a resident, um, Scottsville on Page Street. Actually, I'm still burned to high sun. And, um, I'm very, very interested in, in getting to, uh, help out with the planning commission. And I'm very interested in the small downtown area planning. So, about it. I don't have any, uh, planning commission experience, but I'm willing and able to learn, and I'm very excited to be a contributing member.
We appreciate your interest as well. If the, the planning commission can cause you to pull your hair sometimes, I don't know. It is a lot of fun, and you get to see, you know, you get to see exactly how things work, uh, in, in that area and how you can be helpful in the future of the town. So, anyone have any questions for Shannon?
Do we need a motion for the official appointment?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept Shannon Strossner as a member of planning commission.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the votes, those in favor.
Hi.
Aye.
Welcome. Anything else? Again, thanks those who are here in person and thank those who are, uh, joined us from home tonight. You know, we're all always available by phone. If you have a question, a problem, or anything you need to talk about, don't hesitate. And do I hear a motion for German? I mean, we, we, and a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.
Night, everyone.
Thank you all for participating in this meeting of Scottsville Town Council. This meeting will be archived and available online. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you very much, Matt.